The August 16th, 2021 meeting of the Seattle City Council will now come to order. It's 2:01 PM. I'm Lauren Gonzalez, President of the Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Escada?
Present.
Peterson?
Present.
Strauss? Councilmember Strauss?
Present.
Kerbold?
Here.
Juarez?
Here.
Lewis?
Yes.
And Council President Gonzalez?
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you so much, colleagues. As we discussed this morning during council briefing, we do have one presentation this morning. Councilwoman Escada, on behalf of Councilwoman Morales, has a proclamation proclaiming August 2021 is Black Philanthropy Month. Councilwoman Escada is going to first present the proclamation, and then after she presents the proclamation, I'll open up the floor for comments from other council members. After council member comments, if any, I will go ahead and suspend the rules to allow our two guests to accept the proclamation and provide comments. So I'm going to hand it over to Councilwoman Escada to present the proclamation.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Colleagues, again, I am here on the behalf of Councilmember Morales today to present and to honor August as Black Philanthropy Month. This is the 10th anniversary of this designation nationally, originally started in 2011 by Dr. Jackie Bolivar Copeland and the Pan-African Women's Philanthropy Network to illuminate the ingenuity and transformative impact of Black generosity. In Washington State, this is the first year celebrating Black Philanthropy Month as Black philanthropic leaders such as Black Future Co-op Fund, the Seattle Foundation, Threshold Philanthropy, Philanthropy Northwest, and their allies have come together to organize a series of events to explore the theme of, quote, "demystifying philanthropy, moving towards Black abundance," end quote. They have a series of virtual events that will be taking place during the rest of August that are free and open to anyone to RSVP to discuss how we invest in a liberated future by, for, and with Black Washingtonians. And a quote from the organizers of the event, they state, quote, "It is no secret that anti-Black racism has purposefully and persistently undermined the opportunity for Black people to build wealth over generations. Since its founding in the early 20th century, predominantly white-led institutional philanthropy has over-invested in white-led nonprofits. Their revenues are 76% larger than Black-led nonprofits. Institutional philanthropy invests only 1.8% in Black communities," end quote. Collectively, with philanthropic and government investment, we must intentionally and equitably invest in resources to undo the legacy of injustice that has entrenched inequities within Black communities. I'm honored to be bringing this forward on Councilmember Morales's behalf in honor of Black Philanthropy Month and look forward to bringing this conversation to our community members. Councilmember Morales wanted to welcome Cedric Davis and Andrea Copeland Sanders to the meeting today. As philanthropic advisor at the Seattle Foundation, Cedric works as trusted partner to help philanthropists build relationships and bridge their passion with cultural community needs. From families to nonprofits to business, Cedric works with a wide variety of philanthropists to ensure they receive a personal approach to their community. For more than two decades, Andrea has worked to promote economic mobility and racial equity for people across Washington State. As Bird Bird's place CEO since 2008, Andrea leads the organization in its efforts to build an equitable Washington through innovative programs and services that nurture people's health and well-being. She is also instrumental in designing initiatives that focus attention on the adverse impacts of racism and advocating for policy and systems change. Inspired by the uprising for racial justice in 2020, Andrea, together with three other Black women leaders, launched the Black Future Co-op Fund, Washington's first all-Black-led philanthropy to ignite Black generational prosperity, health, and well-being throughout the state. Near the same time, she also joined with three other women of color to create the Bi-Poc Executive Directors Coalition of Washington State, bringing together their nonprofit leaders of color to promote unity, reparation, and restoration for BIPOC communities. Serving as Commissioner of the Washington State Commission on African-American Affairs, on the Board of Craft III, Crescent Collaborative, and Africatown Community Land Trust, I'm excited to be here with you all today on Councilmember Morales's behalf to turn it over to Andrea and Cedric so we can honor this important monumental step in Washington State and here in Seattle.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Escada. Before we hand it over to our guests, we will have an opportunity to hear from them in just a moment after I suspend the rules. But colleagues, are there any other comments or questions on the proclamation before I suspend the rules? I'm not seeing any hands raised. Let me go ahead and suspend the rules, and then we can hear from Andrea and Cedric. If there is no objection, the council rules will be suspended to allow our guests to accept the proclamation and provide remarks. Hearing no objection, the council rules are suspended, and I want to welcome Cedric Davis and Andrea Copeland Sanderson. Welcome to the City Council meeting today. I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to you two to make any comments you wish to the council and/or the viewing public. And I see that Cedric is off of mute first, so I'm assuming that means you're going to get to go first.
It does. Thank you, Council President. I want to first extend my gratitude to the City of Seattle, the Seattle City Council, your staff, and just all of you for acknowledging and proclaiming August as Black Philanthropy Month in the City of Seattle. Second, I want to thank my Black Philanthropy Month co-organizers, who are all giving their time, talent, and treasure to advance this effort for Washington State. Black Philanthropy Month is an annual global celebration of giving across the African diaspora, as it was expressed on the beginning of Black Philanthropy Month. This is the 10th year we're getting an opportunity to celebrate this effort. And Black Philanthropy Month is August, and Black Giving Day is August 28. The month-long observance invites all people of African descent and allied brothers and sisters to take August and beyond to promote the power of giving to transform lives. During August, we will uplift the history of Black philanthropy in Seattle, address the elements of time, talent, and treasure, as well as the disparities of giving capacity across communities. One of our primary outcomes is there's an extraordinary legacy of philanthropy, an ongoing achievement in philanthropy, and that merits a concerted effort to uplift important stories, spotlight good work, to educate the generations, and inspire giving. Philanthropy at its etymological root means love of humankind, and everyone deserves love and deserves to flourish with love. Now, I'm going to celebrate my colleague Andrea Copain. I'm going to give her the floor to talk about and share some of the events that we have lined up. But again, thank you all for giving us this opportunity. And Andrea, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And thank you, Council President. Thank you, committee members. And just thank you to the city for, as Cedric stated, we're humbled by the opportunity to uplift the Black Philanthropy Month with us and to partner with the City of Seattle. This partnership is joined by our state, in fact, who designated August as Black Philanthropy Month via proclamation as well from Governor Inslee. And fellow partners in this work include the Black Future Co-op Fund, the Renton Regional Community Foundation, ESK Family Fund, Threshold Philanthropy, Philanthropy Northwest, and of course, the Seattle Foundation. And as Cedric said, with allies, allies who have come together to organize this intentional focus for our community. We see this as an opportunity to highlight the various forms of giving in the Black community and underscore the disparities in investments to the Black community. You'll see that illustrated in panels that we have scheduled through the remainder of the month. We will be talking about what philanthropy looks like in its various forms in our Black community, from your typical wealthy person, but your very everyday mom-and-pop person who gives just $5. We want to show you through these conversations that this work is rooted in our ancestral African culture and traditions of communal giving and sharing. These are traditions that have traveled across the Atlantic during the slave trade and inhabit the practice of helping each other, which was essential to our ancestors' survival. And today, and you'll hear in some of the panel discussions, in the face of discriminatory policies and racist institutions and persistent anti-Black violence, Black communities continue to create ways to take care of ourselves, and you'll hear more about that in these discussions. We know that Black prosperity requires intentional, significant investment in Black communities, and by coming together through this partnership for Black Philanthropy Month, we want to be able to collectively strengthen investment in Black well-being. So, thank you. Thank you for your willingness to proclaim and uplift Black Philanthropy Month.
Thank you so much, Andrea and Cedric. Really appreciate you being here with us, and more importantly, all the work that you do through your roles in philanthropy and focusing in on these really important issues. So, thanks so much for being with us today. Colleagues, any other comments or questions for the good of the order? All right. Well, thank you so much to both of you for being with us. Look forward to seeing all of the activity that you all are planning for August, and congratulations. And I hope you know that we on the City Council and at the city are ready to be ongoing partners with you all in this important work. Thank you so much. We're going to go ahead and move to approval of the minutes. Of course, thank you. The minutes of the City Council meeting of August 9, 2021 have been reviewed. If there's no objection, the minutes will be signed. Hearing no objection, the minutes are being signed. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the minutes? If there's no objection, the introduction and referral calendar will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the introduction and referral calendar is adopted. Approval of the agenda. Colleagues, there was a last-minute request from Councilmember Juarez's office to make a small modification to today's agenda, so I'm going to make a motion to adopt the agenda. I'll need a second, and then Councilmember Juarez can make her motion. So, I move to adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda, and I'm going to hand it over to Councilmember Juarez to make her motion.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to move to amend the agenda to reorder one item, and I think it's the last item of our resolution. I was hoping that, I know we have tribal community and elders that are calling in or at least listening, and I was hoping that we could kindly move this item up sooner. Doesn't have to be first, just sooner. That's my motion.
All right. So, it's been moved that the agenda be amended by moving item 39, Resolution 32018, before item 1 on the agenda, and it's been seconded. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the amendment?
Escada?
Hi.
Peterson?
Hi.
Strauss?
Yes.
Kerbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
And Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, Council President, very much.
You're welcome. Pardon me, as I have a coffee fit over here. All right. Are there any further comments on the amended agenda? All right. If there's no objection, the agenda will be adopted as amended. Hearing no objection, the amended agenda is now adopted. So, colleagues, at this time, we will open the remote public comment period for items on the City Council agenda, introduction referral calendar, and the council's work program. I want to thank everyone for their ongoing patience and cooperation as we continue to operate this remote public comment system. It does remain the strong intent of the City Council to have remote public comment regularly included on meeting agendas. However, as a reminder, the City Council reserves the right to end or eliminate these public comment periods at any point if we deem that this system is being abused or no longer suitable for allowing our meetings to be conducted efficiently and effectively. I'll moderate today's public comment period in the following manner. Public comment period for today is scheduled to be 20 minutes, with each speaker having two minutes to address the council. I'll call in each speaker in the order in which they pre-registered to provide public comment on the council's website. Excuse me. Each speaker must call in from the phone number used for this registration and using the meeting phone number ID and passcode that was emailed to them upon confirmation. This is different than the general meeting list and line call-in information. Again, I'll call in each speaker and the name in order in which they registered on the council's website. If you've not yet registered to speak but would like to, you can go to seattle.gov/council to add your name to the list. Once I call a speaker's name, staff will unmute your microphone, and you will hear the automatic prompt if you have been muted. After you hear that automatic prompt, you must press star six to begin speaking. Again, that is star six to begin speaking. Please start by reminding us of your name, the item that you're addressing, and as a reminder, the item that you're calling in today should be on today's agenda, the introduction referral calendar, or the council's work program. You're going to hear a chime during your testimony, and that chime indicates that you have 10 seconds left of your total allotted time. Once you hear the chime, please begin to wrap up your comments. If you do not end your comments within the allotted time period, then your microphone will be muted so that we can call in the next person. Once you're done with your public comment, please disconnect from the line, and you can continue to watch this meeting via Seattle Channel or any one of the listening options listed on the agenda. Public comment period is not open, and we will begin with the first speaker on the list. Please remember to press star six after you hear the prompt if you have been unmuted. Just a second here. First, on our list is Howard Gale, followed by Jenny Dorsett.
Good afternoon, Howard Gale, District 7. I am asking the council to delay the vote on legislation before you today, legislation that attempts to control the SPD's use of a variety of weapons that have been used to frighten folks from exercising First Amendment rights and to injure people, sometimes in life-altering ways. In writing this legislation, you consulted with the people who fire these weapons, the police, but at no point did you consult with those at the receiving end of these weapons, those who were injured and terrorized. In writing this legislation, you spoke to police apologists, lawyers, government bureaucrats, and those who supposedly speak for the community, but never to the community itself. We all recognize that there's been a complete failure of any police accountability for last year's abuse. As notable and as worrying is that one year after all this abuse, there's been a total absence of public forums to address what happened. The victims of this violence have been silenced and disrespected. This makes today's legislation even more abstract and untethered from reality. The legislation before you will fail to mitigate the abuse engaged in by the SPD. It only offers the SPD a new roadmap for how it must justify its abuse post hoc. More worrying, the legislation through a poorly devised victim's right of legal action will actually incentivize the SPD to falsely charge protesters of crimes in order to evade legal liability. You have failed to provide any protection, any consequences, any accountability for all the abuse. Don't compound your avoidance and harm by passing symbolic legislation that further jeopardizes protesters and eliminates any small hope they have for some measure of accountability. Do not pass such legislation without proper community input and without all council members present. This is going to be a complete betrayal of victims and the entire Seattle community, and it demonstrates the urgent need for us to have full civilian community control. Go to seattlestop.org to find out how. That's seattlestop.org.
Thank you. And I'm hearing some background noise, so if you are here with staff, can you please mute yourself? Okay. Jenny Dorsett is next, followed by Valerie Schlorrett. Go ahead, Jenny.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Jenny Dorsett, and I'm from work with Hudson Pacific Properties. I am here to speak in support of Council Bill 120121, and especially Councilmember Lewis's amendments to allow for additional flexibility for small office uses in downtown and Pioneer Square. Hudson Pacific owns property throughout downtown, including the 411 First Building and Pioneer Square, and 1918 VIII Building in the regrade. We are deeply invested in the vibrancy and economic viability of downtown, especially at the street level. The impacts of COVID have been devastating on our street-level tenants, and there is a significant amount of vacant space at the ground level throughout downtown, which is leaving gaps in the urban fabric. We support this bill, especially the Lewis amendments, because it will provide flexibility and allowed uses for the short term. We believe that this flexibility, including the very limited amount of office allowed at ground level, will be a positive step towards reactivating streets throughout downtown. This will provide for limited flexibility, and having occupied the street level with people who can shop and eat downtown is good for the downtown ecosystem versus having empty spaces. Without people downtown, there is going to be continued stagnation. We appreciate council, and especially Councilmember Lewis, working with DSA, the Alliance for Pioneer Square, and downtown stakeholders, and ask that the council adopt Council Bill 120121 with all of the Lewis amendments. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Valerie Schlorrett, followed by Natalie Quick.
Hi, council. I'm a District 2 resident calling about the less lethal weapons ban you're voting on today. I was surprised to hear council allow language to remain in Section 8 of the bill that removes the right of legal action from a person who is harmed by police use of these weapons if they, quote, "in the judgment of a reasonable person commits a criminal offense at or immediately prior to the use of less lethal force." That is an overly broad category that opens the door to all sorts of manipulation. It will allow police and the city to wiggle out of justified legal action for doing harm. Anyone who has been watching SPD can see how this will play out, particularly since we have no effective system of police accountability. You could go to seattlestop.org to find out how Seattle could have a better system of police accountability and join the movement that is going on in cities across the country for a system that is determined by city residents and civilians. Please don't create incentives for police and protesters to falsely charge abused prosecutors, prosecutors, I mean, to falsely charge abused protesters so that the city can avoid liability. Abandon or better-defined excuses for using these weapons, and delay voting on this bill until the public has more time to give feedback, and all council members can be present. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in today. I do have Barbara Finney registered, but showing up as not present. So, Barbara, if you can hear me, make sure you double-check that call-in information. If you call in, we'll certainly give you your two minutes. Otherwise, we're going to hear from Natalie Quick next, and then after Natalie will be David Abbott.
Great. Thank you, Council President. Good afternoon, councilmembers. I'm Natalie Quick, speaking today on behalf of NAAP, our state's commercial real estate association with hundreds of members in Seattle. I'm here to speak in support of Council Bill 120121, and especially for Councilmember Lewis's amendments to allow for additional flexibility for small office uses in downtown and Pioneer Square. We are deeply invested in the vibrancy and economic vitality of downtown, especially at the street level. The impacts of COVID have been devastating on our street-level tenants, and there is a significant amount of vacant space at the ground level throughout downtown, which is leaving gaps in our urban fabric. We support this bill, especially the Lewis amendments, because it will provide flexibility and allowed uses for the short term. We believe this flexibility, including the very limited amount of office allowed at the ground level, will be a positive step toward reactivating streets throughout downtown. We appreciate council, and especially Councilmember Lewis, working with our downtown stakeholders, and ask that council adopt Council Bill 120121 with the Lewis amendments. Thank you.
Thanks for calling in, Natalie. Next up is David Abbott, followed by Ian Morrison.
Thank you, council. This is David Abbott, Seattle resident, warden, and raised commercial real estate broker in Seattle for close to 20 years. I am too calling in in favor of the Bill 120121, and especially of the amendments that Councilmember Lewis has made. In my 20 years working in this business, I've never seen a time as dire as this. We have obviously been hit tremendously hard within the retail sector. The retail tenants, meaning our warehouse, are typically the tenants that would occupy ground-floor spaces within office buildings. The office use within the retail space would not cannibalize, in my opinion, the retail premises. Rather, it would drive the density that we need back to the streets in terms of population, as well as help with crime and some of the nighttime activity that we've all experienced. Once again, I'm in absolute favor of the amendment and the Bill 120121, having countless times butted up against zoning challenges where either it's users or owners of real estate that are looking to put together favorable transactions for not only them, but the streets gave, and we have not been able to do so. I don't think this is ultimately the end goal, but it certainly is, I think, a very successful stopgap to get us through what has been a very, very challenging time. So, I appreciate the time. Once again, David Abbott, and very much in support of 120121 and the amendments that have been made by Councilmember Lewis. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in, David. Next up is Ian Morrison, followed by David Haynes.
Thank you, Council President. Ian Morrison with McCullough Hill Leary, and a District 3 resident. Again, joining in the conversation in support of Council Bill 120121 about the interim street-level uses, and want to first off say thank you to the mayor's office and OPCD for bringing this forward. You know, when we started with the impacts that you have seen throughout the downtown and the vacant storefronts, we appreciate the work that the mayor has done in trying to bring stakeholders together to look at short-term tools for interim recovery. And I agree with the conversation that happened this morning at the work session, and I want to call out the language that Councilmember Lewis has proposed, particularly the language that allow for light manufacturing and maker space, so the flexibility to have some additional active, interesting uses at the ground level, and also want to talk in support of the conversation that I understand Councilmember Strauss and Councilmember Lewis have had, to tailor solutions, particularly for Pioneer Square, that would allow for very limited flexibility for office that recognizes the unique character of that historic district. And also, and I think this is an important innovation identified by Councilmember Lewis and Strauss, giving DON director staff the ability to administratively approve some of these uses, which means that that retail space is going to be able to be permitted faster. And that's why, while I know that this conversation about land use can be complicated, and we appreciate the patience of the Council President, I would join in that conversation to say we support the Lewis amendments and was able to talk this morning with the Alliance for Pioneer Square staff, particularly about the new Lewis amendment that I think he will be bringing forward, and would echo the support both on behalf of the Alliance, which has authorized me to say that, and on some of those Pioneer Square stakeholders for this new Lewis amendment, which reflects the compromised language in Pioneer Square. So, thank you, and we'd ask for the council's passage of the bill. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ian. Next up is David Haynes, and then I am showing James Wilson on my list as not present. David, go ahead.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Can you hear me? Thank you. I live in District 7 at Burstyn Cherry Street. I need to point out to you, we only legalize crop grown weed. City Council exempted hundreds of criminals who roam through my neighborhood selling meth, crack, heroin, shards, and diseased prostitutes, while rapes and kidnappings and low-level organized operating in illegal bar and brothel in Pioneer Square in between Cherry and James that sells alcohol and meth and women and intent to use. I would like to point out that Pioneer Square, Burstyn Cherry, in between Cherry and James, is overrun with 60 criminals every single night, fueled by malt liquor sales at the 24-hour 7-Eleven at Burstyn Cherry, where every aggressive panhandling, unmasked, spit-spraying, repeat offending criminal and addict downtown meet up between 12:00 AM and 6:00 AM. Since I've lived in my apartment, and I've never been able to get a normal night's sleep, I'm usually up till 3:30 AM to 6:00 PM with people freaking out yelling regularly, people attacking, getting shot, and just today, I can't even get around the building without poop-eating flies dive bombing into the apartment building, where someone broke into the hallway and poop-direal after shooting up in an apartment with drug pusher inside and outside, while over 20 tents with no running water in Pioneer Square, no real outreach, and no bathroom, other than my building being used as a toilet, while downtown association ignores problems in front of the 24-hour 7-Eleven, while the cleanup crew, never cleaning proper, always hiding inside my apartment building, where evil heroin dens invite junkies to shoot up, then camp while people are dropping pants and going to the bathroom with no effort to conceal their private parts right outside the restaurant and beneath the street tourism offices with pants down going to the bathroom in Pioneer Square. And I realize that the government has completely failed in the oversight of public safety and the homeless industry corrupt politically connected donors, the owner--
Okay. I am checking the list one more time to see if we have any more public commenters. I'm not seeing any other folks who are-- I'm not seeing any other folks who are signed up and both present. So we're going to go ahead and close the period of public comment and move to other items of business on today's calendar. Next up is payment of the bills. Will the clerk please read the title?
Council Bill 120158, appropriating money to pay certain audited claims for the week of August 2nd, 2021 through August 6th, 2021, and ordering the payment thereof.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move to pass Council Bill 120158. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to the bill pass. Are there any comments? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Mosketa?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Fadis?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
And Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read item 39 into the record?
Agenda item 39, Resolution 32018, supporting the creation of the United States Truth and Healing Commission on Indian boarding schools and actions to address the lasting harm of Indian boarding schools.
Thank you so much. I move to adopt Resolution 32018. Is there a second?
Second.
Excellent. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution. Councilmember Juarez is the sponsor of this item, so I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to her to address the item.
Thank you, Council President. Again, thank you so much for accommodating and by moving item 39 to item number one. I really appreciate it. Resolution 32018 supports Secretary Deb Holland's Truth and Healing Commission regarding Indian boarding schools. This commission would study and address ongoing impacts of the 1819 Civilization Fund Act. This federal policy passed by our Congress established Indian boarding schools for the sole purpose to forcibly remove American Indian and Alaska Native children from their families to assimilate into white settlements. The commission would lead investigative efforts of past, present, and US boarding schools as well as identify services to respond to intergenerational trauma that families continue to face to this present day. The law states through education, therefore, forced the removal, cultural genocide, and emotional physical abuse of Native children was protected under federal law. Back in 2019, then Congresswoman Holland and Senator Warren introduced legislation to create a truth and healing commission that addresses present-day impacts of the 1819 Indian boarding school policy that forcibly removed Native American children from their families in order to assimilate them as what is now deemed a civilized society. Senator Warren and now Secretary, I'm sorry, Interior Secretary Deb Holland continue to fight for this legislation as we all do. Research and advocacy on this topic is led by the Native American Boarding School Healing Coalition, and our office has been working closely with them as well as local tribes. There, these are national leaders, organizations, tribal governments, and policy folks behind this federal legislation. To support ongoing efforts at the federal level, I have with me today a resolution that outlines specific measures of the Truth and Healing Commission that the city must support. We hope that the city would support and acknowledge today. The commission will investigate boarding schools across the country and address the intergenerational trauma that forced removal, that the forced removal has had on Indigenous families to this day, as I shared with you all this morning as well. Last week, the mayor's office informed us that their intent is to support this legislation and sign this resolution. Council President, I respectfully ask and recommend that my colleagues in this council adopt this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Juarez. Are there any additional comments on the resolution? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Mosketa?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Fadis?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
And Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
The motion carries and the resolution is adopted. The chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read item one into the record?
Agenda item one, quick file 314482. Office of City Auditor requests for an extension for filing a report relating to Seattle Department of Transportation Surveillance Technology Usage on License Plate Reader Technology and a report on closed-circuit television traffic cameras technology.
I move to approve clerk file 314482. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the clerk file. I'm going to hand it over to Councilmember Peterson, who is the sponsor of the clerk file.
Thank you, Council President. Our City's Transportation Utilities Committee has three clerk files on today's agenda, all related to technology. Clerk files 314482, 483, and 484. These clerk files accept the updated schedules for our Seattle Information Technology Department and from our city auditor to give them the time needed to finish the review of various surveillance technologies. The theme here is the need to provide more time due to delays lingering from the COVID pandemic. A Seattle IT and our city auditor already provided advance notice to us about the need for these extensions. And these three clerk files were on the introduction for a calendar published online August 6. This first clerk file, 314482, is the request from our city auditor for more time for just two technologies from our Seattle Department of Transportation, the license plate readers and the S dot closed-circuit cameras that assist with traffic management. This is justified because our city auditor's office has been short-staffed this past year, and they recently completed similar reports on the same two transportation technologies. I concur with our city auditor's extension request and ask my colleagues to approve it by accepting this clerk file. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Peterson. Are there any additional comments on the clerk file? Hearing no additional comments. Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the clerk file?
Mosketa?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Fadis?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
And Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Seven in favor and none opposed.
The motion carries and the clerk file is approved. Will the clerk please read item two into the record?
Agenda item two, quick file 314483. Seattle Information and Technology Department requests for a six-month extension for the filing of the Group Four Surveillance Impact Report due on September 1st, 2021.
Thank you so much. I move to approve clerk file 314483. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. It's been moved and seconded to approve the clerk file. I'm going to hand it back over to Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Council President. This is the second of the three clerk files related to technology. This clerk file, 314483, provides a brief extension to our Seattle Information Technology Department for finishing the thorough review of various surveillance technologies pursuant to our city's surveillance technology ordinance. Essentially, Seattle IT needs more time due to delays lingering from the COVID pandemic. And the good news is that we've already made substantial progress during the past year, reviewing, amending, and approving two batches of technology reports, what we called Group Two and Group Three, which covered 12 technologies. So this clerk file provides a few more months for the remaining batch. When we had approved a previous six-month extension, Seattle IT provided notice that they might need a few more months, but we decided to approve extensions only in six-month increments. So this extension would give their thorough process a few more months. This is also related to the next clerk file, which will divide Group Four into two groups, 4A and 4B, so they're easier to review. One of the technologies that has attracted interest is the traffic management tracking called acyclica. SDOT's currently examining the possibility of discontinuing the use of acyclica, but we'll still plan to have SDOT provide a status update on that technology at our September 15 Transportation Utilities Committee. So again, this clerk file will be approving a few months' extension for Seattle IT to finish the next batch.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Peterson. Are there any additional comments on the clerk file? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the clerk file?
Mosketa?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Fadis? Lewis?
Yes.
And Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Seven in favor and none opposed.
The motion carries. The clerk file is approved. Will the clerk please read item three into the record?
Agenda item three, quick file 314484, revised master list of technologies.
All right, short and sweet. I move to accept and file clerk file 314484. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the file, to accept and file the clerk file. I'm going to hand it back over to Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Council President. This is the last of the three clerk files related to technology. This clerk file, 314484, is consistent with the previous clerk file, and it divides the list of remaining technologies to review into two groups, Group 4A and 4B, so they're easier to analyze, amend, and approve. A 4A will be submitted soon and 4B in December. I ask that the, my colleagues approve this request. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Peterson. Are there any additional comments on the clerk file? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the acceptance of the clerk file?
Mosketa?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Strauss? Councilmember Strauss? Herbold?
Yes.
Fadis?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
And Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Seven in favor and none opposed.
Motion carries. The clerk file is accepted for filing. Will the clerk please read item four into the record?
Agenda item four, Council Bill 120144, relating to city employment adopting a 2021 citywide position list.
I move to pass Council Bill 120144. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. As sponsor of the bill, I'll address this item and then happy to open up the floor for any comments. Council Bill 120144 adopts the 2021 citywide position list and executes administrative actions that do not substantively impact city operations or employees. These, these administrative actions have no fiscal impact and include reclassification of job titles, returning positions to the civil service system, and the authorization of emergency positions. All positions in the 2021 position list will remain in effect unless changed by administrative or future legislative action, and I recommend that my colleagues support passage of this council bill. Are there any additional comments on the bill? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Mosketa?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Fadis?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
And Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Seven in favor and none opposed.
The motion carries. The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read item five into the record?
Agenda item five, appointment 2026. The appointment of Jeffrey G. Berry as member, Joint Apprenticeship Training Committee for a term to December 31st, 2021.
Thank you so much. I move to confirm appointment 2026. Is there a second?
Second.
As sponsor of the appointment, I'll address this item and then open up the floor for comments. Colleagues before us today is the appointment of Jeff Berry to the Joint Apprenticeship Training Committee. This committee advances work of Seattle City Light, where Mr. Berry has been an employee for over 20 years now. He has a long career with the city and has served in many roles, beginning as a line worker apprentice and then an electrician/constructor apprentice, and has become a leader and instructor in his field, supporting the learning of others, joining the trades. Since 2017, he has served as relief crew chief with Seattle City Light, and Mr. Berry will be an asset to the Joint Apprenticeship Training Committee with the experience and dedication he has for this work. And I recommend that, that the full council approve the appointment of Jeffrey Berry to be a member of the Joint Apprenticeship Training Committee. Are there any additional comments on this appointment? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the confirmation of the appointment?
Mosketa?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Fadis?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
And Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
The motion carries. Any appointment is confirmed. Will the clerk please read item six into the record?
Report of the Public Safety and Human Services Committee, Agenda Item Six, Council Bill 120105, relating to the Seattle Police Department banning the ownership, purchase, rent, storage, or use of less lethal weapons and amending Sections 3.28.146 of the Seattle Municipal Code. The committee recommends the bill pass as amended.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Herbold, you are the chair of the committee, so I'm going to hand it over to you to provide this report.
Thank you so much. So much of what I'm going to say now is a repeat of this morning's comments, but for the public record and the viewing public, I just want to go through the background and the, the outcomes of this, of our many months' policy discussion around the ordinance that, amendments to the ordinance that the council passed back in June. So as context, there are currently no restrictions in the Seattle Municipal Code on the use of less lethal weapons. The Public Safety and Human Services Committee voted 4-1 to pass it at our meeting on July 13. At that time, I moved to hold it so that we would not hear it in full council until after the consent decree status conference that occurred last week. We wanted to make sure that in case the court weighed in at that status conference, that we would be informed by, by the discussion happening at the status conference. The court had no comment on the legislation in the status conference, and so I'm looking forward to our discussion and vote on it today. The legislation itself includes a full ban on acoustic weapons, directed energy weapons, blast balls, ultrasonic cannons, and water cannons. The use of noise flash devices, otherwise known as flashbangs, are banned in demonstrations. The bill conditions the use of pepper spray and pepper ball launchers on instances when the risk of serious bodily injury from violent actions outweighs the risk of harm to bystanders. And separately from the conditions on pepper spray and pepper ball launchers, tear gas is allowed in even more narrow circumstances. The legislation does not regulate the use of non-chemical launchers, for instance, beanbag, rubber bullets, blue tip launchers. And so the, there is, there is no regulation in the code as relates to the use of those particular type of less lethal weapons. And that's important for folks who have raised questions about what less lethal weapons are available in instances where there is a threat of, of property damage. When we were in deliberations around this legislation, myself and Council President Gonzalez met with the, the Consent Decree Monitor and the Department of Justice out of respect for the consent decree process and in, with the objective of getting their feedback in advance of final council action. This was informal feedback to the formal consent decree process, which has yet to occur. The committee first acted back in February, after several months of discussion, to recommend a draft bill that was used for those discussions. During the conversations about the draft bill, we heard from the Department of Justice concern that restricting the use of certain less lethal pools and court management circumstances could actually lead to officers using higher levels of force, putting both assault of protesters and the surrounding non-violent protesters both at higher risk of harm. Judge Robert expressed similar concerns. The DOJ likewise inquired as to whether the draft bill allowed for relevant SPD officers to be trained in changes to policy, again, to avoid the unwanted impact of having untrained officers resort higher levels of force than necessary. This was an issue that Judge Robert also raised. So by submitting the draft legislation for this informal review, receiving this kind of feedback, it allowed us to make further amendments to the draft legislation before the legislation itself was referred. And in order to help address those concerns, the council, the legislation added a definition of control and provided 60 days to a- and provided 60 days to allow for training after the court approved the legislation. Another update, after hearing back from the monitor and Department of Justice, was to make clear that in narrow circumstances as it relates to pepper ball launchers, that they, they can't be used for the purpose of crowd control, but if there is a large group of people and the purpose isn't crowd control, but it's the risk of avoiding serious bodily injury from violent actions, and that outweighs the risk of harm to bystanders. So again, the purpose isn't to move people, but is intended to mitigate or limit the likelihood that somebody is seriously hurt in a crowd, that the pepper ball launchers are permitted. Again, this not only is in response to feedback we received through this informal review process, but it also recognizes that a district court ruling just very, very recently specified that approved policies for the use of our pepper ball launchers. And Judge Robart specifically authorized the use of pepper ball launchers in late February as part of SPD's court mandated annual update to use of force policies. So given that just in February, Judge Robart approved the use of pepper ball launchers in this narrow circumstance, we can't very well ask him to review a new policy that revokes the allowance that he's approved. Reminder that this all started back in June of 2020 with the council's unanimous adoption of legislation sponsored by councilmember Sawant and the use of nearly all less lethal weapons. And the, the response from the court was to almost immediately issue a restraining order on that bill in July of last year. And in its ruling, the court stated in the temporary restraining order that the legislation itself did not protect public safety. In August 2020, the CPC, the OIG, and the OPA commented on the legislation that the council passed. They sent us recommendations for how we might consider changing it. And we shared that feedback from our accountability partners in our committee, that that feedback was also sent to Judge Robart as well because he also had requested that feedback. This bill has consumed much of the time and efforts of the Public Safety and Human Services Committee over the last year. We've discussed this policy, including roundtables with our accountability partners in seven separate Public Safety and Human Services Committee meetings since last September. While not perfect, my overall goal is to adopt the strongest legislation possible, building on the consensus recommendations of the three accountability bodies within the context of the consent decree. Just want to note that the CPC did write to the committee in support for the legislation while noting their perspective that they believe more needs to be done. They wrote to say, "The Seattle Community Police Commission writes today to offer its support, Council Bill 120105. The commission believes that the bill's inclusion of clear delineations of when less lethal weapons can and cannot be used and limitations on who can use them is a significant first step in ensuring the safety of community members when they engage in First Amendment protected protests." I've heard concerns in past committee meetings, and we heard some of this today, about the right of action contained in, in the ordinance, and this is the right of action for members of the public to pursue what they perceive as violations of the ordinance. I want to be clear that the language in the ordinance allows the city to offer affirmative, an affirmative defense that the violation did not occur. The language will not make anyone accused of a crime ineligible from using the right of action merely because they've been accused of a crime. A person accused of a crime can file suit under the right of action. It is not accurate, as some have suggested, that if the affirmative defense was used, that the judgment of a reasonable person a crime was committed, that the city, in order to prevail, would only have to prove that an officer said they thought a crime was committed. That is not the legal standard of the affirmative defense. Just closing out before calling for the vote, just so folks understand what the, the next steps are. If the legislation passes today, the Seattle Police Department will draft policy revisions that reflect the ordinance. They'll do so within 60 days, provided by Section 4 of the bill. The DOJ and the monitor would then review the policy revisions, and this is when their formal review under the consent decree takes place. Then the court would review the policy revisions. And then finally, if the court approves the policy revisions, the revised policies and substantive provisions of the bill will take effect as provided by Section 5 of the bill. So really want to thank my colleagues on the Public Safety and Human Services Committee for sticking with this for many, many months and meetings and hours. Appreciate all of the engagement with our accountability partners throughout the process, as well as the feedback that we've received from the DOJ, the Consent Decree Monitor, and the general public, who has come out to every single meeting where we've discussed this and given their feedback to the legislation. And I, I hope we can all count on your vote in favor of this legislation today. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Herbald. Are there any additional comments on the bill? Councilmember Strauss, please.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmember Herbald, I just have a couple of questions, mostly repeating back to you what I heard you just say to make sure that I got this clearly, since I don't sit on your committee this morning, it was my first real formal briefing from you on it. And just hearing that the court had no comment on these bills during last week's meeting, is that to be interpreted as they have no issues? Or is that to be interpreted as they may have issues, but they made no comment?
The latter.
That they may have issues, but they have no?
We held, we held the bill from being heard in full council. We delayed it because we thought that it might be, be a topic. The settlement conference was scheduled really without any information about what the topic was going to be. They, or we had some information about what the topics would be. We didn't know if it was going to include this. And so the settlement conference occurred. It was a quarterly settlement conference that the, that the city regularly has. This did not come up as a topic.
Okay. And I heard clearly that the CPC is in favor of this. Did the monitor or Judge Robart have concerns that have not been addressed?
So we'll find out whether or not there are concerns that have not been addressed when we go through the formal consent decree process. We have worked to address the concerns that were raised in the informal process.
Thank you. And then the last question that I have is what I think I heard you say, just to put it very clearly, to focus, that after this is passed and before it goes into implementation, the DOJ and the monitor will have time to review and decide what is implemented and what is not implemented. My question here is just ensuring that we're not at odds with the process and that we are in tandem with it. Is, is that a correct understanding?
That is absolutely correct. Thank you, Councilmember Strauss.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbald. Job well done.
Thank you, Councilmember Strauss, for those questions. And I do want to sort of emphasize, I've been participating with Councilmember Herbald in the background on many of these process-related issues, and just want to emphasize my fervent belief that we have really done everything we can as a city council to protect the integrity of our legislative authority while also complying with what we think are legal obligations under the consent decree. And so don't think that, I, I really do believe that moving forward on this legislation now is the next step in that process to allow us to enter the bill into the more formal review process. But think we have done everything we can in the informal process to try to identify, suss out many of those issues that we think the court and the DOJ and the federal court monitor might have. And I think this is the next natural step to allowing for perhaps a more official, fuller review of the bill. That doesn't mean that the bill, that they won't identify additional concerns, but I think at this point, those concerns would be related to the policies as opposed to whether or not the council complied with the process. Councilmember Muscada.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to weigh in and say thank you to Councilmember Herbald as Chair of Public Safety for stewarding this conversation through. Also wanted to thank Councilmember Sawant, who is not here today, but I know has spoken to this issue many times, and I also heard Councilmember Herbald note their, their leadership on this as well, who brought forward the legislation initially. I think all of us here today, by considering this legislation, are really showing that we think that this legislation in this amended form is an important component to making sure that we're moving our commitment to accountability forward and doing so in partnership with our accountability partners along the way. I think the importance of this legislation cannot be understated, especially as the memories of last year's response to the protests are still relatively fresh in many of our minds. We all remember the stories. We all remember the public testimony, the hours of calls that we received as people expressed their frustration and many times their surprise and shock about the response to the protests that were standing up in support of Black Lives. We also heard a number of reports, and this was covered in the press as well as people calling our offices to note that members of the national press, legal observers, medics had been pepper sprayed or been hit by projectiles like blast balls and launchers. We saw video of a child being sprayed in our streets in downtown Seattle at short range in the face. And we heard the testimony of the father of a nine-month-old baby who was calling for an end to the days of use of tear gas in our most dense neighborhood in Seattle on Capitol Hill, the father of a nine-month-old who had woken up to their baby foaming at the mouth. I think it's fair to say, we believe that nobody deserves to be afraid of physical harm when doing their job, whether they're members of our officers, police officers, or members of the press, medics, legal observers, everybody who is doing their job and also standing up to express their First Amendment right has a right to be safe. We also want to make sure that bystanders, like the many people who called in, are also free from harm and want to make sure that the tools that are used by our public officers are first prioritizing public safety. I think this legislation puts in, in place important side rails for how our police department interact with crowds and demonstrations, and I'm also hopeful that these policies can help deescalate their response to make sure that it's not continuing to escalate when we see tools that are causing harm to folks. I look forward to voting yes on this legislation and know it's been through a long process that was just summarized here today. Appreciate the hard work that's gone into this and the importance of this legislation today. Thank you for your work on it.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Muscada. Are there any additional comments on the bill? So before I hand it back over to Councilmember Herbald to make final remarks, I also wanted to echo my gratitude to Councilmember Herbald as the Chair of our Public Safety Committee. This has been a long and arduous process. I think it's been it almost a year-long process, if not just slightly a little bit longer than that. And so I think I have a high level of confidence in, in the process that has been stewarded by Councilmember Herbald and do think that it is now time for us to coalesce behind this particular bill and to enter it into the formal process, that is, the review of the consent decree process and to allow for there to be a final judgment of sorts on the policy choices that the city council has determined are appropriate and that are reflected in this particular version of the council bill, which is different than the first council bill, which was subjected to a temporary restraining order and was, in effect, blocked from implementation. And so I think this is a good threading of the needle and appreciate the good work of Councilmember Herbald. She managed to thank everyone else at the city. But, but it's our responsibility to thank her for the good work that she's done on a very important issue with a lot of really tricky challenges and a lot of stakeholder engagement that needed to happen. So my thanks to you, Councilmember Herbald, for all of your, your good work. And I'll hand it back over to you for closing out debates so we can call this bill to a vote.
Thank you very much. I did thank a lot of the external stakeholders, but I would like also to close out with my appreciation for the many folks internal to the city who have been helping on this, on this bill, including Alisa on Council Central Staff, Noel in my office, Carolah in the city attorney's office, as well as our own legal counsel that has been assisting us on this, on this legislation as well. I know people have spent a lot of, of hours. And really, it's because I think we believe in the intent of the bill, which is to, to create some reasonable restrictions where none currently exist so that we can do everything that we can to ensure the safety of community members engaging in First Amendment protected protests. It's really important that we continue our work in this area, protecting civil liberties during protests, but also recognizing that we are, we are, we are doing so within the context of consent decree, as Council President Gonzalez put it. It is, it is a bit of a threading of the needle, but I do look forward to the next step in this process where we go into the formal policy review and having this legislation. Still, again, perhaps not as, as broad as the legislation that we all voted in favor on in, in June last year, but still, I think it's, it is a historic effort for the city of Seattle to, to, to take this, this, this position, regulating these weapons in the goal of preserving civil liberties and the rights of folks to protest. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Councilmember Herbald, for those closing remarks. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Muscada. Aye. Peterson.
Aye.
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbald. Waddis.
Aye.
Lewis.
Yes.
And Council President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
The bill passes, and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Thank you so much, everyone. Will the clerk please read item seven into the record?
Agenda item seven, Council Bill 120148, relating to parking enforcement, amending ordinance 126237, which adopted the 2021 budget transferring positions out of the Seattle Police Department and ratifying and confirming certain prior acts. The committee recommends the bill pass as amended.
Great. Thank you so much, Councilmember Herbald. This one also comes from your committee, so I'm going to hand it back over to you.
Thank you so much. So just as a bit of background, last year during the budget process, the council took budget actions and passed legislation expressing our intent of transferring both the parking enforcement officers and 911 dispatch out of the Seattle Police Department and into the new Community Safety and Communication Center. In May, we took the legislation up that would actually implement the, the planned action from the, the budget process the previous fall. At that time, there was a divided workforce. The supervisors of the parking enforcement officers were interested in, in moving to ESTA, and they were, are represented by PROTEC. And the parking enforcement officer rank and file was represented by SPAG, and they wanted to go to the Community Safety and Communication Center. Because there was this division among, among workers and also among management, the, the executive was also very interested in the PEOs going to ESTA, as were several council members. We amended that legislation and just transferred the 911 dispatch to the Community Safety Communication Center. And we included a proviso extension to allow us to continue to have the conversation and make sure that the PEOs were continuing to get and make sure that the PEOs were continuing to get paid while still at the Seattle Police Department. That proviso extension expires on September 1st. Unfortunately, this extra time did not really have an outcome of a different, different result. There is still a divided workforce. I know that SPOG, the frontline parking enforcement officers and Protech, who represents the PEO officers, are still in conversations with how to come to an agreement and improve relations. But I have heard that, that the, the, the positions haven't changed, but nevertheless, I'm being responsive to the, the fact that a majority of council members are interested in transferring the PEOs to the Seattle Department of Transportation. And for that reason, the bill as passed out of committee unanimously with an amendment that I introduced does transfer the PEO unit to ESTA. The bill includes a ratify and confirm clause to ensure the unit is paid come September. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Herbold. Are there any additional comments on the bill? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Muscati.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbold. Quattis.
Aye.
Lewis.
Yes.
And Council President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read item eight into the record?
Report of the Land Use and Neighborhoods Committee, Agenda Item Eight, Council Bill 12121, relating to land use and zoning adopting interim provisions by amending sections 23.76.004, 23.76.006, and 23.76.032 of and adding a new section 23.42.041 to the Seattle Municipal Code to facilitate occupancy of street-level spaces downtown during the COVID-19 civil emergency and adopting a work plan. The committee recommends the bill pass as amended.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're going to hand it over to Councilmember Strauss, who is the Chair of the Committee, to provide us the committee report.
Thank you, Council President Gonzalez. Colleagues, thank you again for your patience with us this morning as we had a mini-committee during briefing. I want to say at the top that I'm just very appreciative of Councilmember Lewis bringing forward a revised version of Amendment Three. It has addressed the, the issue, the policy issues, not philosophical, the policy issues that I had concerns with, and I really appreciate that. So this legislation overall provides greater flexibility for the types of uses that are allowed on the street level in downtown Seattle to address vacant storefronts. The land use code regulates street-level uses to ensure that ground floor spaces are pedestrian-friendly and to add to the connectivity and vibrancy of our downtown streetscape. For example, the land use code encourages pedestrian-friendly street uses by allowing things like restaurants, shops, and these types of businesses on the ground floor, which pedestrians interact with and create an interesting environment. It does not allow uses such as warehouses, which create dead space along a downtown sidewalk. This is true, this is also true of neighborhood commercial districts, street-level uses, although the standards for downtown are even more narrow than throughout our city. In response to downtown storefront vacancies, Mayor Durkin proposed Council Bill 12121 to expand the list of use, uses allowed on the street level in downtown so that these vacancies are able to be filled more quickly. The expanded list roughly mirrors the list of allowed street-level uses in non-downtown neighborhood commercial districts. So just again, more conservative downtown, these lists mirror the neighborhood commercial districts uses that are on the street level. So new allowed street-level uses downtown would include art installations, community centers, medical offices, coworking spaces, and gyms or other amenities associated with apartment building or hotel. The ordinance would be in effect for one year, after which new uses from the expanded list would not be allowed without further action. Uses from the expanded list are permitted within the one-year window, would be granted the ability to remain in perpetuity or until that use ends. It would not, if, if a use is in a space, that use ends, that, that exempted use could not be reapplied if it's outside of the one-year parameter and no further action is taken. The Land Use and Neighborhoods Committee adopted an amendment from Councilmember Lewis to expand this legislation to cover South Lake Union as well, which was in the initial study completed by the departments. So before I turn it back over to Council President, I'd like to thank everyone who worked on this legislation in the mayor's office, OPCD, SDCI, Department of Neighborhoods, Councilmember Lewis, and Daniella in his office, the downtown stakeholders who worked very hard to make this legislation work well, and Noah on the committee clerk in my office. Thank you, Council President.
Thanks so much, Councilmember Strauss for that, and I appreciate the work during the in between hours, between council briefing and now to get us to what appears to be a consensus position. Really appreciate your efforts on that, in that, and also Councilmember Lewis's efforts in that. I do know that Councilmember Lewis still has a couple of amendments he'd like to advance, so I'm gonna hand it over to Councilmember Lewis to move those amendments before we have a opening of the floor for comments on the bill as a whole. So let's go ahead and consider the amendments, and then we can take comments on the amended version of the bill before we take a final roll call. So Councilmember Lewis, I'm gonna hand it over to you to move Amendment One.
Thank you, Council President. I do need to at some point move to suspend the rules to substitute Amendment Three, Version Two C. And so do you want, should we?
Let's go, let's go through the, yeah, yeah, let's go through the, let's go through them in order, and when we get to the substitute version of Amendment Three, we can do the suspension of the rules and whatnot. But these, these initial amendments don't require a suspension of the rules, so let's just take, take them as they are.
Thank you so much, Madam President. So I will move Amendment One to Council Bill 120121 as presented on the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and if the bill be amended as presented on Amendment One, Councilmember Lewis gonna hand it back over to you to address the contents of Amendment One.
Thank you, Madam President. So as we discussed this morning, Amendment One is the light manufacturing component of what historically was one combined amendment. My office did, based on feedback from the committee hearing, separate out the light manufacturing, which had a consensus from committee members and from city departments to be part of the ultimate bill. The more controversial discussion around street-level office use was something that I thought the, the council would benefit from being able to have a separate vote on, given that there was consensus on the other half. So this bill, this amendment only addresses the light manufacturing, of which there is harmony within the city and with stakeholders in support of. As part of the considerations this morning of moving this along, the Downtown Seattle Association, myself and Councilmember Strauss agreed to no longer pursue the amendment for street level office use in the downtown neighborhood, opting instead to leave that issue alone, based on feedback from the departments and, and a lack of interest in stakeholders in further pursuing it, given some of that feedback. So I will not be moving Amendment Two, only Amendment One and a revised version of Amendment Three based on that feedback. So I, I don't have anything else to add to that unless colleagues have questions that I can answer. But otherwise, I will just call, be ready to vote whenever the council is satisfied.
Great. Thank you so much, Councilmember Lewis. So right now, we're just considering Amendment One, and I see that Councilmember Strauss, you had your hand raised. Did you have a comment on Amendment One?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to make it clear for the record, Councilmember Lewis, you're more than welcome to bring Amendment Two. I appreciate you being responsive to departments and working with stakeholders to make that motion to not bring it forward. My issues this morning, I just want to focus on were regarding Amendment Three. So just for the record, appreciate all the work that you've done.
Alrighty, so Amendment One is on the table. Are there any additional comments on Amendment One? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of Amendment One?
Muscati.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbold.
Yes.
Quattis.
Aye.
Lewis.
Yes.
And Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you so much. So we're gonna go ahead and move past Amendment Two, as I understand from Councilmember Lewis, he is withdrawing Amendment Two. Is that correct?
Yes, Madam President. I'm withdrawing Amendment Two.
All right, so we are moving to Amendment Three, which Councilmember Lewis has already indicated requires a suspension of the rules since there is a substitute. So if there is no objection, the council rule relating to circulation of amendments by 12 noon will be suspended to allow consideration of a new version of Amendment Three. Hearing no objection, the council rule is suspended, and Councilmember Lewis, you may now proceed with consideration of Version Two C of Amendment Three.
Thank you, Madam President. This amendment was distributed before full council. It, it, it does, does not have significant departures on the whole from the predecessor amendment, but there are a few, and, and so I'll, I'll do my Kittle impression and try to address them authoritatively. I will say that the biggest difference-
First of all, I'm sorry, Councilmember Lewis, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I need you to move.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Yes, no, of course. I'm sorry, Madam President. Yes. I, I move to amend Council Bill 120121 as presented as Amendment Three, Version Two C.
Second.
It's been moved. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. It's been moved in second, and if the bill be amended as presented on Version Two C of Amendment Three. Now I'm gonna hand it back over to Councilmember Lewis to address the substance of this new version.
Yeah, see, Kittle goes on vacation and I just start messing up all the procedure here. So there you go. No, so a, as I was, as I was gonna begin to address, it's the, the same as the prior amendment regarding the Director of Neighborhoods being able to make street-level use decisions while these interim controls are in place, so for the next 12 months in the Pioneer Square Preservation Special Review District. We are assessing a limit on the office space frontage in the Pioneer Square neighborhood to 30 feet of street-level space. So this, this is a control that was important to the Pioneer Square business improvement area. There is one notable carve-out in the legislation, and that is for the area zone, PSM 85120 zone. And that would be allowing up to 90 feet of street-level usage. This change is supported, as was heard in public comment by the Alliance for Pioneer Square, to address a unique condition in that area in the neighborhood that is isolated, where the street-level use recruitment has been particularly difficult, and there is already a prospective tenant that this particular constituent has. So it is, was a priority for the Alliance for Pioneer Square to make that exception, and one which I was happy to queue up for the consideration here of the council. We heard a number of folks call in urging passage of this amendment, who are downtown stakeholders, who are eager to start the long process of getting more folks into these storefronts and activating these storefronts. This is an important piece of legislation to, or an important amendment for this piece of legislation to realize its full potential with our downtown partners, and I do urge its passage today.
Great. Thank you so much. Are there any additional comments or questions on Version Two C of Amendment Three? Councilmember Strauss, please.
Just again, thank you, Councilmember Lewis, for tailoring this bill. This amendment is in a much better place than it was this morning, and just really appreciate you working so hard with two versions since council briefing this morning. Really appreciate it. Fully supportive.
Thank you so much. Any additional questions or comments on Version Two C of Amendment Three? I'm not seeing any additional comments, so will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of Version Two C of Amendment Three?
Muscati.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbold.
Yes.
Quattis.
Aye.
Lewis.
Yes.
And Council President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
The motion carries. The amendment is adopted, and the amended bill is before the council. Are there any further comments on the amended bill? Councilmember Lewis, please.
Thank you, Madam President. And it's now my turn to thank Councilmember Strauss for prioritizing moving this bill before we go off on council recess. As we heard in public comment today, there are a lot of very interested stakeholders in the downtown Pioneer Square and South Lake Union neighborhoods who are eager to use these new rules to inject new vibrancy and vitality into these neighborhoods that have experienced the brunt of the impact from COVID. It's really critical to, to note that this could be the beginning of a big reinvention and increased dynamism in these neighborhoods, which historically have had very restrictive uses for these storefronts. And this is really an opportunity to rebound from COVID in a stronger position and experiment with some more flexibility in areas that traditionally have just been for restaurants and retail. And I think that we've seen the examples of a lot of other downtowns nationally and a lot of the business districts spread around the city of Seattle, where more innovative and flexible use of the space can create new dynamism that reflects the downtown of today, which is not just a commercial space, but a, a neighborhood of tens of thousands of residents, a neighborhood where people are raising families, a neighborhood where people play after they go to work. And I think that this is essential to really realize that full potential and continue to, to plan in downtown as a neighborhood rather than just this regional space of congregate work and, and live performance, but also a place where people do live, work, and play all at the same time, like a lot of our other neighborhoods in the city. So with that, I appreciate the process that we put into this. I appreciate the work of the departments that have queued this legislation up fairly quickly so we can get it out before recess and look forward to voting on it.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Lewis. Are there any additional comments on the bill? I'm not seeing any other hands raised, but Councilmember Strauss, would you like to have the last word on the bill before you close out debate?
Yes, just very excited to have this bill passed before council recess. And this, along with bringing business home and street cafes throughout the city, are some of the ways that I personally in this council as a whole have supported vibrancy of our downtown and throughout our, our community, and this is just another one of those good pieces of policy to make downtown more vibrant. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Strauss, and thanks to all of the Members of Land Use and Neighborhoods Committee. I'm excited about being able to support this particular version of the bill. So thanks, everyone, for the hard work. With that being said, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the amended bill?
Muscati.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbold.
S.
Quattis.
Aye.
Lewis.
Yes.
And Council President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
The bill passes as amended, and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Okay, will the clerk please read item nine and 10 into the record?
Report of Community Economic Development Committee, Agenda Items Nine and Ten. Appointment 1629 in 1980. Appointments of Sang Yoon, Sophia Lee, and Rachel E. Morowitz as member Seattle Women's Commission for a term to July 1st, 2022. The committee recommends the appointments be confirmed.
Thanks so much, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Lewis, you are the Vice Chair of the Committee and are going to provide the committee report in the absence of Chair Morales.
Thank you, Madam President. I, sorry, I'm just queuing up, switching the notes from the land use to the to the Economic Development Committee here. And, and I, I apologize, Madam President, these for which commission, for the appointments that we just read.
Yeah, no worries. We were, we're just juggling through everything related to land use, but we are on items nine and 10. So this is for the, the two appointments for the Seattle Women's Commission.
Yeah, okay, sorry, the, the order is different in Councilmember Morales's notes.
Oh, that's okay. No worries. So we're looking at the two appointments for the Seattle Women's Commission.
Yes, great. I have those queued up here. So thank you so much. So yes, the committee had the opportunity to hear from Sophia Lee and- So yes, the committee had the opportunity to hear from Sophia Lee and Rachel Morowitz last week. Sophia Lee, as I mentioned this morning, is a Korean-American immigrant transgender woman of color. She is currently a software developer at Microsoft and the board chair of a transgender rights organization, Gender Justice League. Rachel Morowitz is a first-generation Fajian American who strives to increase awareness of LGBTQ issues in her law firm. She hopes to advocate for policies that make Seattle a more equitable environment for women, particularly concerning economic opportunities and physical safety, and to do so in a way that acknowledges and addresses the intersectionality of women in Seattle. Both appointments were unanimously recommended by the committee, and I urge their appointment by full council this afternoon.
Thanks so much, Councilmember Lewis. Are there any additional comments on the appointments? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the confirmation of Appointments 1629 and 1980?
Maskeada?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sawant? Excuse me.
That's okay.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Quattis?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
And Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Seven in favor and none opposed.
The motion carries, and the appointments are confirmed. Will the clerk please read Items 11 through 18 into the record?
Agenda Items 11 through 18, Appointments 1996 through 2003. Appointments of Jovino Santos Neto, Jessica Toon, Nick Verewick, and Shannon Wells as members Seattle Music Commission for terms to August 31st, 2022. Appointments of Andrew Jocelyn and Anne Barry O'Dowd as members Seattle Music Commission for terms to August 31st, 2023. Appointment and reappointment of Kiola Kama and Nate Omdal as members Seattle Music Commission for terms to August 31st, 2024. The committee recommends the appointments be confirmed.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna hand it back over to Councilmember Lewis, who is the vice chair and gonna provide this committee report.
Thank you, Madam President. Really excited to queue up our Seattle Music Commission appointments. Jovino Santos Neto is a three-time Latin Grammy nominee and a master pianist, flutist, composer, arranger, conductor, and educator from Rio de Janeiro. Jovino lectures on the connections between biology and music, usually coupled with live performances. He taught at Cornish College of the Arts in Seattle for 26 years. Jessica Toon has dedicated her career to developing and supporting creative communities through mission-driven arts and culture organizations. Jessica joined the Recording Academy Grammy in 2019 as its executive director for the Pacific Northwest Chapter, serving the music communities of Washington, Oregon, Idaho, Hawaii, Alaska, Montana, Wyoming, and Western Canada. Nick Verewick is vice president of programming at Climate Fudge Arena and responsible for the strategic content programming of all concerts, family shows, and special events, as well as facilitating the NHL hockey and WNBA basketball schedules at the new facility. Shannon Wells is the founder of Friends of the Showbox, a community coalition to landmark and save Seattle's iconic music venue. And she holds a management position with the Showbox. She has a deep knowledge of venue operations and worker relations and is an AEG One Earth Ambassador, dedicated to reducing venue environmental impact. But, Madam President, I'm going down here, did, did, have we broken the music appointments into two agenda items?
Let me see here, we should be going all the way through Nate Omdal. So no, they should all be in one section. It should be Appointments 1996 through 2003.
Okay, great, I, I will introduce all the commissioners. And then, sorry, so moving on, we also heard from Andrew Jocelyn, who's a composer, orchestrator, and violinist. He currently runs his own production studio in Seattle, leads the Passenger String Quartet, and has scored several feature-length films. Anne Barry O'Dowd has been executing festivals and events in Seattle and beyond for 20 years. She currently serves as Events and Festivals Manager at Friends of Waterfront Seattle, stewards of Seattle's new waterfront park. Kiola Kama is a native Hawaiian from the island of Maui, whose education and music career has taken him from Seattle to Los Angeles and back. After 10 years at record labels, Kiola joined Napster in Seattle to help the team innovate in the streaming space via both marketing partnerships with indie artists, as well as negotiating licensing agreements with labels. Bassist, composer, and producer Nate Omdal is one of Seattle's leading musical innovators, and his production work can be seen and heard all over the city of Seattle. Currently, Nate is serving on the Director's Board of the American Federation Musicians, Vocal 76493, and works as a contractor for Sky Muse Studios. And Madam President, all of those appointments were approved unanimously by the committee, and we urge their final passage today.
Great, thank you so much. Are there any additional comments or questions on the appointments? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the confirmation of Appointments 1996 through 2003?
Maskeada?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Quattis?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
And Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you so much, the motion carries, and the appointments are confirmed. No? Okay. Will the clerk please read Items 19 through 29 into the record?
Agenda Items 19 through 29, Appointments 2014. Appointment and reappointments of Natasha A. Bennett, Erica Chen, and Jessica C. Buneon as members Seattle Human Rights Commission for terms to July 22nd, 2022. Appointments and reappointment of Julia Ishmael, Alan Nyeribo, and Brian Egger as members Seattle Human Rights Commission for a term to January 22nd, 2022. Appointments of Kaylee Mary Cleba and Claire Alward Gilmet as members Seattle Human Rights Commission for a term to January 22nd, 2023. Appointment and reappointments of Bonita Annie Chadha, Tyrone Grandison, and Erin G. Orevio as members Seattle Human Rights Commission for a term to July 22nd, 2023. The committee recommends the appointments be confirmed.
Alrighty, thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Lewis, back to you to address these appointments.
Thank you, Madam President. Natasha Bennett is a trilingual social science researcher and analyst specializing in human rights. She serves as an advisory board member for World Without Hate, a Seattle-based organization based on building empathy and breaking the cycle of hate and violence. Alan Nyeribo has been involved in the community mental health sector and has functioned in various capacities as a case manager, therapist, and program manager. He is currently a graduate student at the School of Social Work and Criminal Justice at the University of Washington Tacoma, and holds a bachelor's degree in social psychology. Julia Ishmael is the founding head architect of Aspirations, founding head architect of Aspirations of the Equity Consortium, a convener and gatherer of collective wisdom. Julia is also a transformative justice practitioner. Janita Shata is a first-generation intersectional woman and a child of a formerly incarcerated parent, who is passionate and curious leader with a mission to engage in solutions and policies for families and youth impacted by incarceration. She holds a bachelor's degree in sociology and human rights from the University of Washington, and a Critical Race Theory and Intersectionality Certificate from Dr. Kimberly Crenshaw's Summer Program through the African-American Policy Forum. Kaylee Cleba grew up in the Buda Sound region, earning a BA in Comparative History of Ideas from the University of Washington in Seattle, and an MA in human rights from Central European University in Budapest. She currently works as administrative assistant at a law firm in Seattle and cooks dances and bikes in her free time. Claire Alward Gilmet is a data-driven management and evaluation professional focused on solving problems for social sector organizations. As a proud Seattleite and social justice advocate, Claire is inspired by the opportunity to serve on a city board or commission, and eager to meet new Seattle residents and curious to learn about their experience of living in the city and ideas for making Seattle an incredible place to live. All of those appointments were unanimously approved, as well as the reappointments of Tyrone Grandison, Erin Orevio, Jessica Buneon, Brian Egger, and Erica Chen. So with that, Madam President, I urge the confirmation of those appointments by the full council.
Are there any additional comments on the appointments? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the confirmation of Appointments 2004 through 2014?
Maskeada?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Quattis?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
And Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Seven in favor and none opposed.
The motion carries, and the appointments are confirmed. Will the clerk please read Items 30, Items 30 through 38 into the record?
Agenda Items 30 through 38, Appointments 2015 through 2023. Appointments of Geneva Arunga, Mia Arunga, Nayima Clark, Afu Kwayke, Sergio Max Legon Telomony, Melina Rivera, CM Ruiz, Julie Chang Schulman, and Michael Sayarath as members of the Cultural Space Agency Public Development Authority Governing Council. The committee recommends that the appointments be confirmed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Back to Councilmember Lewis to give us this report.
Thank you, Madam President. So the Cultural Space Development Authority is a critical step in realizing our goal as a city of building community wealth. The intent is to have a mechanism in place that helps secure long-term, affordable, commercial, cultural space with community partners, build community wealth through direct investment in real property, create opportunities for ownership of commercial, cultural space, and partner with communities of color with particular focus on the needs of Black and Indigenous communities. Today, we are voting to seat the first-ever governing council of the Cultural Space Agency. And the council will be responsible for ensuring that the Cultural Space Agency is meeting its mission with impact and integrity. While the council's not involved in the day-to-day management of the agency, they are ultimately responsible for the agency's finances, property investments, compliance, and executive staff. So with that, I'm proud to announce the committee's first appointments and recommend that the council ratify those appointments. For Geneva Arunga, who has served on multiple councils and boards, including the African Youth United, Hip-Hop Congress, Mayor's Youth Council, Umumaja Peace Center, and Africa Town. She created the Central District Reunion in 2017 as an annual remigration of displaced Central District alumni. Mia Arunga has been involved in community organizing through her connections to multiple community organizations, including Technology Access Fund and CWE International, which she owns with her sister. Nayima Clark is founder and director of Nurturing Roots Farm, located on Beacon Hill, a program committed to addressing food justice issues in the community. She currently hosts workshops ranging from germination to systemic food oppression, participating on panels and lectures, and sharing her journey as a Black female entrepreneur. Afua Kuyate spent the last 50 years building a ministry of African-American and Native, Native African folk, folkloric culture. In 1986, she founded the Afua African Music and Dance Company that provides cultural entertainment to youth and families. Sergio Max Legon Telomony is a practicing architect and graduate of Building Art Space Equitability Program. He is co-founder of La Union Studio, that weaves cultural narratives into the space they design. Melina Rivera has dedicated the last decade to community health and environmental justice. She serves as director of operations at Front and Centered and brings direct experience in commercial lease management. CM Ruiz is a graphic artist, a curator, and a cultural space organizer and producer. He is the founder of the much celebrated Niemoto Art Space and has partnered with the Low Income Housing Institute, MOPAP, and KEXP. Julia Chang Schulman, also known as Julie C., is a hip-hop artist, interdisciplinary cultural worker, writer, and educator. As a recording artist with BOC Music, she boasts a discography of over 40 compilations, soundtracks, and artist guest spots. Michael C. Wirth has over two decades working in affordable housing and cultural space. He is the executive director of SEED Southeast Effective Development, a community development corporation providing housing and arts space. Again, all of those appointments were unanimously recommended by the committee and urge that they be confirmed.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Lewis. Are there any additional comments on the appointments? Right, I'm not seeing any hands raised. So will the clerk please call the roll on the confirmation of Appointments 2015 through 2023?
Maskeada?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Quattis?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
And Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, the motion carries, and the appointments are confirmed. Okay, other business, is there any further business to come before the council? Hearing none, colleagues, this does conclude the items of business on today's agenda. The City Council will be on recess again, as a reminder. The City Council will be on a recess from Monday, August 23rd, through Monday, September 6th. And also, as a reminder, we have canceled the City Council meeting on September 7th in observance of Rash Ashana. So our next regularly scheduled City Council meeting is on September 13th, 2021, at 2 o'clock PM. So that means that we will not see each other until September 13th, when we will assemble once again as a full council. So I hope that you all have a, certainly a wonderful afternoon and evening, and that you all find some rest during the summer recess. And we'll see you on the other side when we'll dig into the budget and, and last-minute items of substantive legislative policy work for the council. With that being said, colleagues, we are adjourned. Thank you so much.